All right, well, it is six thirty. Why don't we get going? Welcome to the February third, two thousand and twenty five, meeting of the Easton Planning and zoning Board. This meeting will be held remotely over Zoom. It's also broadcast live and recorded on ECAT. To use Zoom, you will need to use the link on the agenda or download the Zoom application. While conducting remote meetings, we will endeavor to keep meeting operations as close to standard procedures as possible. However, use of the remote platform will necessitate some additional meeting protocols. All the board members or commissioners and applicants will be on video and audio invited to speak by the chair. Public participants joining by Zoom will be muted and with no video feed from them. Public lines will be muted throughout the meeting to allow the board to conduct business and to eliminate background noise. For general meetings, not hearings, only for items under which the chair solicits public comment. Members of the public participating in the Zoom meeting may submit a written question via text chat, provided they include their full name and address for the public record. Members of the public viewing the media on ECAT may submit their questions in writing via email to dped@easton.ma.us. Any questions not addressed in the meeting may be answered afterwards via email and will be incorporated into the minutes. All votes will be by roll call. For public hearings during the public testimony portion of the meeting, members of the public joining via Zoom may be recognized by using the raise hand function. If you're joining only by phone, you can press star nine to raise your hand. Chair reserves the right to designate a specific point of the hearing at which testimony may be offered. The duration of the comment period afforded to each individual and the number of individual entities permitted to speak are also at the chair's discretion. As in any public hearing, testimony offered must be related to the hearing being held. When all business indicated on the agenda has been completed, the members will vote to adjourn the meeting. To start tonight's meeting, we will do a roll call. Weeks.
Here.
Wolf.
Here.
Kid.
Here.
Zigmond.
Here.
And Stetson's here as well. First item on the agenda is a request for continuance for thirty six Norfolk Avenue special permit.
Um, motion to continue thirty six Norfolk had special permit to March thirty first, two thousand and twenty five. Wolf.
So I think.
Any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none. Wolf.
Aye.
Weeks.
Aye.
Kid.
Aye.
Zigmond.
Aye.
And Stetson's an I as well. Next up, we have a continued public hearing for five thirty one Foundry Street Special Permit Multifamily Hammerhead LLC Gary Bynnekey.
And we have Aaron Luluka. And. Peter Lavoy.
Good evening, everyone. If you don't see Gary there, Stephanie, he's his under.
Oh, wait a minute, he's GB.
Yes. He couldn't change his name for some reason.
That's okay. That it should have occurred to me.
Welcome back. If you could just introduce yourselves and the floor is yours.
Aaron Luluka, Twisted Smoke Real LLC.
Uh, Peter Lavoy, uh, Landmark Site Design.
Gary Bynnekey, and I'm trying to work the camera, so give me a minute.
We can see.
Oh, there we go. Okay. Good evening, everybody.
Welcome back.
Thank you. Um, so we're back. Um, I think we've pretty much covered everything except for, um, Peter was working back and forth with the peer review engineer, John Chesia, to get all the, um, Ts crossed and Is dotted on the plan which we, uh, which we did. So the plan that you have, um, is the complete reviewed plan and, um, we should be good to go from here. So if there's any questions regarding the plan or, um, anything that we may have covered before that you want to review, uh, you've got the three of us to ask questions of.
I can share the plan if, if you would like to allow me to do that, Stephanie.
Um, that's up to the chair.
Oh, sorry. I think that would be, I, I think that would be helpful. It's been a few meetings since we've seen it.
I apologize. Here. Give me one second. That. Give me one second. It's not giving me the option to share the one thing that I want to share. Let me close everything else. Let's try this.
Aaron's a tech guy, if you couldn't tell.
Should be able to see my screen now, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. I want to go right down to this plan here, I believe. Oh, no. Where is it with the numbered spaces? Sorry, I apologize. I thought I had everything keyed up, ready to go.
That would be the second, second sheet or third sheet, right? One more.
One more.
No, one more, right there.
Okay, sorry about that, everyone. So. This plan hasn't changed since we last saw you. Uh, I believe we had shown you the, the guest space out front and that we have a total of now, uh, fourteen parking spaces for the five units. So far more than what is typically required. Is that big enough or would you like me to zoom in on any particular part for you?
I can see it just fine.
Yeah, looks fine here.
In terms of, um, you know, I know there were some engineering questions or issues going back and forth. I wonder if you could just explain how those were addressed and if there were, if that resulted in any significant changes to the plan.
Okay, I can, I can do that. Aaron, can you go to the next sheet? Which is the grain and utility plan? Um, so. So I went back and forth, uh, with the peer review, uh, and what I had to do, uh, because of, uh, the groundwater, uh, I had to do groundwater mounding calculations to show that when the wa, when the underground basins, um, get all this runoff from the site that's been generated, um, typically, uh, groundwater is at an elevation and then when groundwater is isolated, you know, it's directed at a concentrated location, groundwater comes up and then it comes back down. So just where the basin is, the groundwater kind of raises a little bit and, um, both of the underground, the underground basins, the one in the front yard and then the one in the back, I had to show that when that groundwater raises, it doesn't impact, um, the underground basin and the way it was designed. So I did, I did do that. It does show, um, that the groundwater does come up, but we still have, um, the required separation from groundwater, uh, to the bottom of the basin. So that, that only happens when you get a large surge of runoff. Um, we did, we did add a HydroWorks unit up in the front. The, the drainage has changed a number of times. Before we had an open basin and then through time we had to, um, put it underground and then, uh, I had to adjust, uh, the outlets to the basin. Um, so we went back and forth with that. Um, the drainage areas was another thing that, um, you know, John wanted me to get a little bit more detailed because, you know, it is a small site. There is a lot going on. So he wanted to make sure that my numbers were correct, um, to back up my, my drainage design, which we've done that. Um, basic, the basic layout of the site and the pavement, um, has not changed. The, the water and sewer, it's still going to be serviced by water and sewer off of Foundry Street. Uh, the two entrances that we're proposing are, have not changed. It's more to do with, uh, the drainage, uh, and I had to, you know, had to do some gutter calculations to make sure that all the runoff, even in a hundred year storm event, was collected by the gutters, brought through the downspout and into the underground basin to ensure that my design was, was accurate. And that's what I've done.
Peter, can I go to the pre and post plan? I think that outlines this as well, doesn't it?
It, it, it does. This was the major, I mean, this was the plan that shows all the changes.
Um, oh, okay.
Because this is the one that, like I said, most of the changes were, um, to deal with the drainage and the drainage is underground. So you really don't, you don't really see the changes. It's just that the basin in the front got a little bit bigger, uh, because, uh, John wanted me to make sure that I was, um, meeting the requirement of reach out. Uh, and then, like I said, I added that HydroWorks unit to get that TSS removal, the total suspended solids. So, uh, that's what we've done. We've kind of like over, overdesigned the site, which is good, uh, to make sure that it will work. Uh, so that's, that's basically what we've done.
All right, excellent. Well, thank you for that. Stephanie, any comments?
So as Peter said, um, there was some conversations back and forth between the peer reviewer and Mr. Lavoy, and they responded to all of the comments. So we're through with stormwater. Um, I just have a couple of, there are more things we want to make sure get into the decision. And, um, Peter talked about, um, tying into the sewer. So you reminded, um, Aaron and Gary that you need to contact. And I think you've started the conversations with DPW regarding the, the sewer privilege fee.
Yes, we have.
Um, the plant material they've shown is native species. They had pachysandra, which was not, they swapped that out. But I feel that should also be part of the decision that, um, that is known going forward. Um, there was also concerns raised by the abudders about the hours that the dumpsters would be emptied. So, um, I think that should be a condition that the board consider that the hours of, um, emptying the dumpsters are restricted. And I think that's it.
Thank you, Stephanie. Any questions from board members?
Stephanie, is, is this the, uh, plan that you would wanted additional, um, trees on the east side or am I confusing this with another project?
I don't recall that and it's not in my staff report. I think it may have been another project.
Okay, uh, I just was trying to, uh.
It's, it's actually in the recommendations at the end of your report.
Is it? Oh, thank you. Yes, there you go. Thank you, Kathy.
Well, Alan had the good memory.
And I bet they, and, and you folks had talked about it. Do, what I don't see here is the landscaping plan.
Yeah, it's on there. So these were the, um, local trees. Um, this was done by our landscape architect. And so it designates all of the different shrubs and trees and bushes and so forth. Um, either the ones that are existing and or, um, new plantings to be brought in. And we did have a conversation regarding having, um, stuff that was, uh, local.
Indigenous.
Indigenous.
I think the plantings at the back right of the property, which I think is what you're referring to, that's currently wooded and intended to be left that way. Um, I don't know if the board realized that when the comment originally came up.
I'm misremembering, but I thought you had, um, a colored landscaping plan.
Hmm. I don't recall that.
No.
Okay.
I mean, I see plantings on the east side of the lot. Uh, I'm just not sure, Stephanie, where the hosts were or where you had thought. Are they in the right spot? Uh, I, I just don't have a good memory as to the exact.
Yeah, let me just, I'm, I'm pulling up my GIS layer here.
Oh, okay, great.
Again, it's been, we've been long time on this project. Okay, I'm going to zoom in here. So take a look at this.
Stephanie, are you trying to?
I'm going to.
Show that on the screen?
Yes, I'm just, I'm just getting to it.
Perfect. We, we may need Aaron to stop his.
Uh, yes, you do. Uh, you know, it says allow multiple presenters to share. Did we want to do an experiment here?
Sure, why not?
I'm all click stop yet, then.
Just, uh, all right. So you should be able to see the aerial. Everybody?
No.
No.
No or yes?
No.
No, I can, I can see it just fine.
Yeah, I can see that.
I can see it as well.
Uh, you folks maybe can't because you're, is that what's going on?
I just, I just stopped presenting so you could see.
Okay.
So I can see.
So this is the bound, the east of the boundary and you can see there are trees. Um, and again, this is not an exact location of the property line, uh, but it is representative. And it looks like from the plans that the trees are generally located on the abutting property and not on this property. Um, so. I personally prefer plantings to fences. But I do think that, um, recognizing again, the buffer that you retain on your own property is, is the best buffer. But I do feel like, um, they could and should do some plantings along here.
Well, I think the landscape plan does show some plantings and I think it was taking into consideration some of the open area, um, where the existing trees are not to fill in, to fill in the gaps. And I don't think we want to put up a fence. It would just, I don't think it'd look good. It would take away from the, just the natural setting. And then towards the rear, there's a lot of trees back there that I don't want to, I hate clear cutting, so I'm gonna, I want to leave as many as possible. It creates a natural fence line. And I know we have some stone walls there that we're going to retain. And then, um, I think the one that shows on the plan that we're relocating it rearward a little bit or northerly.
Yeah, I mean, I just looked on Google Maps and I, I think that view, Stephanie, is probably, uh, winter and, and and the mat, the view I just saw, it's heavily, uh, treed. So they must just all be, uh, um.
Out of leaf, yeah.
Yeah, leaf shutters.
Yeah, there's a lot, it, this. You can, you can walk through because some of the trees are, you know, on a large size. Um, but they do fully, you know, they get full leaves and the majority of it is, is blocked. You know, the view across the way. Um, you know, you can kind of walk through down at the tree, at the ground level, obviously. But I think that's where the plantings from the landscape engineer come in is that when he looked at that, he was going to fill in between and kind of create that natural fence. So that's what you see on the landscape plan.
All right, thank you for that. At this hearing, I'm going to open it up to the public for comment.
I don't see any hands raised.
Okay. Seeing no public comment, would, uh, would you guys like us to close the public meeting? The public hearing, excuse me.
Yes.
Great, I will accept a motion.
Motion to close the public hearing, Wolf?
Second.
Any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none. Wolf.
Aye.
Weeks.
Aye.
Kid.
Aye.
Zigmond.
Aye.
And Stetson's an I as well. All right. The public hearing has been closed. I know Stephanie's got a few conditions in her report that she mentioned during her remarks. Do I have a, a motion?
Sorry, I had to look up the address again. A motion to approve, uh, five thirty one Foundry Street, Wolf?
Is that with the?
With, with the conditions, I'm sorry. I was concentrating so hard on the address, I forgot the rest of it.
No problem. I think there was a second.
Second, kid.
Any further discussion? And just to be clear for the record, the conditions in Stephanie's report are to contact EPW regarding the, uh, privilege fee and the connecting to the sewer. Um, that plant materials should be native species and a condition restricting the hour the dumpsters are emptied. Would that?
Oh, uh, there's one more about.
Was there one more?
Uh, from the historic commission. Um, it is. Any additional changes to the exterior of the existing historic house and barn be reviewed by the historic commission for appropriative design and materials? And that this should be included as a condition of the decision.
Yeah, just so you know, there's not going to be any, um, changes to the existing home.
Thank you. All right, uh, with that, let's have a vote. Wolf.
Aye.
Kid.
Aye.
Zigmond.
Aye.
And where do we, uh, who am I missing here?
Alan.
Did we just, did we lose Alan?
Did we lose Alan?
Okay, like, uh, Stetson's an I, so I think, I think that covers it.
Yes.
That's, that's sufficient in terms of votes because I think Alan would have been an alternate anyway, correct?
Yes, he would have been.
Okay, so I think we're.
I don't know what happened to him.
I think we're good. Okay. Okay, guys, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. I just want to say publicly too, just so the planning board knows, um, your support staff has been amazing. This is my first time having to go through any of the boards in Easton. Um, and they've made it really as easy as they can possibly.
Well, here's Alan. Can we just add Alan to the vote, please? I'm sorry for interrupting Gary.
It's okay.
She was such a nice sentiment.
It was, it was, it was for you too, Steph.
I was going to give Suzanne all the credit.
Well, she's definitely, you know, the other person that I'm, I wasn't going to name names or go to generally say that. Um, so just, you know, I, I would be, I would be very, you know, proud to have those, that support staff, you know, doing what they do behind the scenes. It's a lot of work.
Certainly is, and we certainly are. Um, before, since we do have Alan back, Alan, did you hear the vote in the, the conditions?
No, uh, I think when we closed the public hearing, my computer made a really strange screeching sound and froze up and I had to restart the whole thing, so.
Okay, so the, the vote at hand was to approve the project with the conditions identified in Stephanie's report. We all voted aye. Would you like to vote as well?
Yes, uh, I, I would also vote aye. That was with dumpster hours limited and, uh, native plantings only.
Correct.
Okay.
All right, and, and Mr. Bynnekey, thank you again for those sentiments and, uh, we appreciate your time here. So good luck on this project.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Have a good night.
Thank you, everyone.
And, and thank you, Gary.
You're very welcome, Steph. Thank you.
Okay. Next up, we have a request for minor modification to the decision at five sixty Foundry Street Sawmill Village.
And we have Rick Lincoln here. Oh, and we have, I'm sorry, his counsel. And Rick, if there's anyone else, I think we have, um, some votes from Sawmill, but, um, if there's anyone else on your side, please let me know.
I think that's it, right, Rick?
There we go. Okay.
There it is.
If you could introduce yourselves, then the floor is yours.
Sure, thank you, Mr. Chair and members of the board. Uh, my name is Tanya Treveson. Uh, I'm with Mirione Shaughnessy and Udi here representing Sawmill Village LLC and its principal, Rick Lincoln, uh, who is on, uh, on the Zoom as well. So today, um, I understand, uh, so the hearing is regarding our request, um, for a minor modification to the decision um, that was issued back in December of two thousand and twenty two, filed with the town clerk in February, two thousand and twenty three. And there's a portion of the decision that references, uh, that all homes are to be sprinkled. Um, and we're requesting the minor modification that that language be removed from the decision and add in its place, um, other language as, uh, proposed in the letter that I filed with the board on January thirtieth. So specifically for phase one of the subdivision, which is commonly referred to as the east side of the bridge, um, those homes would not be sprinklered but would be hardwired to a centrally monitored fire alarm system, the monitoring of which would be the exclusive responsibility of the Sawmill Neighborhood Association. Uh, and for phase two, uh, of the subdivision, which is commonly known as the west side of the bridge, those homes would be fitted with sprinkler systems. Um, a number, so the, the decision, uh, concerns forty four homes total. A number of building permits have already been issued for homes in the subdivision for, for, um, specifically. Um, and none of those homes was constructed with a sprinkler system. So those two of the homes, eleven Coach Road and fifty one Cutter Drive, uh, have both been issued a certificate of occupancy and the parties have closed on the sale of those homes already. A third home, um, numbered fifteen Coach Road is the model home for the subdivision. And that's been drywalled, um, but it, it has not been, uh, completed yet. And a fourth home, fifty five Cutter Drive, has been constructed and the parties were ready to close. Uh, but at the eleventh hour, the buyer's attorney knows. Uh, but at the eleventh hour, the buyer's attorney noticed that the language in the decision, um, stated that the homes should be equipped with residential sprinklers. So, uh, the issuance of a certificate of occupancy and the closing have been delayed. Uh, and these four folks are stuck in a hotel at the moment, so we're hoping to get this, uh, rectified. So that we can get them in their, their new home. Uh, so I, I know, um, Ms. Danielson had submitted a letter. Um, indicating that the, uh, the fire, she had spoken with the fire chief. Um, and he had okayed the proposed amendment, uh, the revised language, so. And I'm, Rick is here as well, if you, if the board has any specific questions with respect to the subdivision development.
Well, just so I'm clear, and I'm looking at the plan that was submitted with your letter, I think it was with your letter. Essentially, what you're talking about is the homes on the right side that have the direct access to Foundry Street. You would be hardwiring those, but not putting sprinklers in. And the ones on the left side that are a little bit off of the street where you have to cross over the bridge, those would still be sprinkled under this proposal.
Correct.
Okay. Stephanie, any additional comments?
No, the only, um, you know, there was a suggestion that, um, the board might want to ask the developer to also tie the sprinkler systems into the central alarm system. That would, um. Avoid any extensive water damage resulting from a false activation of the sprinklers if a homeowner is away. Yep, I.
Can I, wait, this is, yup, this is Rick. Um, I'm not a hu- I, unfortunately, I haven't asked my contractor if they can do that. I think that that is no problem. But I'm, I'm not a hundred percent sure. So on the, on the, um, monitored smoke systems, it's a full control panel that we're putting into the house. Um, and all the smokes and the COs will be hardwired. Um, and there'll be a, an active, there'll be a third party vendor that's, that's actually monitoring everything, you know, twenty-four, seven. I was told by my contractor that the control panel is robust enough where if people wanted security systems and so on, that they could easily be tied in. I, I would assume that, man, fire sprinklers too, maybe in phase two when we get there, but I, I'm not, again, a hundred percent sure. I can ask.
And just so I understand that, Stephanie, so you're basically talking about in terms of the homes. Um, over the bridge.
Yes.
You're, you're asking for both the tie-in as well as the sprinklers?
Yeah.
Now, but the, the tie-in wasn't required by the original decision, right?
Correct, correct.
So just walk me through, what, what, what was the, what was the reasoning for that again?
In the event that someone's not home and the sprinkler system, it goes off and there's not a fire. That it could cause damage to the structure, the interior. Not s- a structural damage per se, but just interior.
Well, it's just practi- cause I have no idea how these things work. I mean, practically speaking, what, what, what happens? So if the, if it's tied in, is there a way to deactivate the sprinklers? Is that how that works?
I don't, I don't think it does. This was suggested to me as, um, just suggesting this be done. I'm not sure how it works. And I think that, um, the compromise that Mr. Lincoln is proposing, um, meets with the original objective of sprinkling the buildings, especially on the west side, because they were the furthest away from Foundry Street.
It seems to, having, you know, perused the decision, it does seem to be consistent with the intent. Which is to make sure that because there were, there's only one access point here to make sure that the homes that were furthest away from that access point are covered by the sprinklers. I'm not sure that same rationale is so necessary with the ones that are right off of, of Foundry Street. So I think that the proposal does seem to make some sense. Uh, board members, do you have any questions or comments?
I'm just curious as to the background, uh. Why, why was the sprinkler, um, system requirement imposed, uh, I assume by the fire department and now that they've relinquished it or? I, I wasn't here for the, uh, all the original discussions.
So Bob, you-
Yep, go ahead.
Let me answer that question.
More than I, yes.
It actually arose because of the subdivision rules and regulations, um, which I reference. I'm actually re- referencing an older version as far as the section numbering goes, but it's, it's, um, still in the updated version. Where emergency, the first is emergency access, which does not allow. Let's see, um, it's emergency access. Does not allow lanes, roads or easements solely for the use of emergency access. Um, and I only included that there because in the findings and in the waiver request from that requirement. So basically, six point two point one says you can't have an, um, a, a lane, road or easement that's solely for the use of emergency access. So we're gonna put that aside for a minute because that is not necessarily why the row, uh, the area was being requested to be sprinkled or required to be, being sprinkled. Then we have six point two point three, which requires a subdivision with more than thirty-six lots to have three means of access. Now, the applicant submitted a waiver requesting a waiver from six point two point one because he was originally proposing, because there was only one point of access, a dedicated and solely for the purpose of emergency access road. That was eventually taken off the table during the permitting process because it reduced the, um, wetland impacts. That would have increased the number of wetland impacts and this was a project that had a lot of wetland resource areas they had to work around and deal with. And it just made the, the project easier to permit. Um, and then they were requesting, but, but in their application for waivers. Um, under that section, they indicated that houses will be equipped with residential sprinklers. And the same in section six point two point three. Again, to respond to the fact that you have more than thirty-six units of housing that only have a single point of entry. They also, in requesting a waiver to that requirement, justified the waiver indicating that the homes will be sprinkled. I believe, um. Subsequently, the fire department then included that per discussions they had, that the unit, the units, uh, would be sprinkled. And I don't know if it was the intention of the fire department to really have all the units sprinkled, but that's the way it made it into the decision.
I, I see, that's helpful. I, I kinda lost track trying to read through. It was quite material there and-
I, I tried to make it, I, I felt like I needed a, uh, kind of a flow chart.
Yeah, no, that was fine. It was good background, not, not having been around for the project, uh, and. I just kinda got lost and still wasn't sure if there was an emergency access road, uh, you know, on that, uh, I guess the west side. Um, that was gonna be just like a, a stoned dust path or something if you had to get in there with a fire truck, but you said that got pulled off the plan because of the environmental impact. And so the sprinkler requirement was really a zoning requirement that we would be able to, um, waive if we wanted to. Okay, I, I understand now. Thank you. That's helpful.
Any other board members? I'm sorry, Stephanie.
No, I was just going to add one thing to that. Of course, in considering the, um, if the board were going to waive it, they would also get in, seek input from the fire department. Which they did at the time, so.
Uh, question. Uh, the ha- the houses that are gonna have the sprink- sprinklers in them, are they also going to have the fire alarms as well, or is it only a sprinkler system?
I'm gonna, I'll, I'm gonna monitor the other side as well. Which may make it possible to monitor, uh, an errant sprinkler system. Um, but again, I'm not sure, but they will be, uh, monitored for smokes, cause the agreement I cut with, um, my subcontractor was a little more advantageous because I offered to do all forty-four houses. So for them, you know, with a little volume, they, they helped me on the price a little bit, so. That's the plan.
Any other questions, comments? About, uh, I know there are a couple of members from the public. Anyone care to participate? Stephanie, do we have any-
There we go, yes, yes, sorry, it was-
Okay. Okay, welcome. Just please state your name and your address, and then the floor is yours.
My name's Kevin McGowan. Yeah, my name's Kevin McGowan. I'm currently living at the hotel. I was living at fifteen Rosewood Drive in Mansfield. And I'd like to get my certificate of occupancy for fifty-one Cutter Lane. Can you hear me?
Yeah, we can hear you. That's, uh, thank you, thank you for your comment. Okay, great.
Yeah.
All right, um. Board members, any additional questions, comments? Otherwise, I will accept a motion.
Motion to approve the minor modification to decision for fifty-six Foundry Street?
Second, Wolf?
Any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none. Kid?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Ziggman?
Aye.
Weeks?
Aye.
And Stetsons and I as well. All right.
We appreciate your time. Yeah, I just wanted to, um, as an aside, echo the prior applicant's statements about, um, your support staff, cause they have been amazingly wonderful in getting this through, um, very quickly, uh, and very helpful. So, thank you again.
Always great to hear. Thank you and have a good night.
Thanks again, guys.
Okay, next up, meeting minutes, January twenty-first.
Um, I just, I had one niggle that I saw on it, and that was under the ninety-five Highland. Uh, right up Suzanne, uh, I think Mickey was listed twice as a voting person.
Oh, okay, I'll check.
It was just a small typo.
Okay.
Okay.
Other than that, it looked fine.
Any motions?
Motion to approve the minutes from January twenty-one with the requested change that Alan has just proposed.
Uh, second?
Any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none. Ziggman?
Five.
Weeks?
Aye.
Kid?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Stetsons and I as well. Uh, chair updates. This is more of, I guess, a, um, more of an inquiry than an update. We obviously were very active last year in terms of proposing zoning changes. We did a lot of research into a lot of different topics. Um, there's a lot going on at this upcoming town meeting and I don't know that we've got the time to, to really present anything new at that town meeting. But one thing I wanted to throw out there is, you know, we did do some research on some other topics last year, including on Washington Street, into some, maybe making some changes into single-family zoning. And I've done some research on Ma- Main Street and have talked to some of the players there, while I'm still waiting for some feedback. What, what do we all think about doing something or looking at doing something for the fall in terms of zoning?
I would support that. I think it's a smart idea to kind of keep the focus on all of the other stuff that's kind of happening in the spring. Um, that way, um, we are not holding people up till midnight to vote on zoning issues, cause nobody's voting with their head at midnight at open town meeting. Um, so yeah, I think the fall is great.
I think that would align nicely too with the master plan update as well. There might be something that comes out of that that might require us to look at, so that would be in line with that timing.
All right, well, that's good. Maybe we could, Stephanie, maybe at some point we can put together a timeline for what we would need to meet to get something on the books for fall town meeting and, and we can work backwards and talk about some of the topic areas that we discussed last year. And put together some more concrete proposals, get some feedback sessions set up, and then get something done.
Yep, we can, we can certainly do that. Suzanne has a lot of experience putting that timeline together, so. We'll, um, work on it this week.
And maybe if we can include like as milestones, when we expect the master plan update to be completed. But I think there's a couple of other plans underway too, like the open space plan.
Um, the climate action plan, mhm.
And maybe something that as well, too, probably with that.
Yeah.
Good idea. Planning director updates.
I don't know, Bob, should I spring my big news?
Probably.
It's, it's so getting time. So for those of you who don't know, I am retiring the end of May. So I-
After all of those planted comments that we had tonight, we're not gonna be able to keep you any longer. I'm just kidding.
You know, let me tell you, after, um, I, we have just met Tanya. Um, this is the first time we've, we've interacted with her. I've, of course, been working with Aaron for a number of years now. And I was just thinking, gee, this is the first time anyone has publicly thanked me and my staff who work very, very hard. Um, and it was, it was really appreciated. I'm, I'm not very good at accepting com- compliments.
Well, you know what, maybe if, maybe if we've gotten more of your well-deserved praise over the years, maybe we could have convinced you to stay longer, but. Well, we all thank you for everything you've done, Stephanie, and I know I personally am very grateful for all the hard work that you and Suzanne put together and you will be very, very missed when you leave.
Yeah.
I assure you of that.
Well, and, and now we're really getting into a lot of the really fun zoning too, so. Sorry not be part of that.
Well, congratulations, that's, uh, retirement's nice.
Yeah, Alan, I've been listening to you and the fun you're having and, yeah, so.
I'm sure you'll fill it out with lots of good stuff too.
Thank you.
All right, well, um, I will accept one last motion.
Motion to adjourn.
Second?
All right, any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none. Weeks?
Aye.
Ziggman?
Aye.
Kid?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
And Stetsons and I as well. Thank you all so much and see you again in a couple of weeks.
All right.
Night.
Night, everybody.
All righty, bye-bye. Stay warm.